I mean, this is.
Very busy.
I don't know.
Very busy.
It was more of a.
Very busy.
Where the.
You said you had a lot of truck.
And that we just had to throw three weeks of work.
Yeah.
Not used for many days.
Yeah.
Um, there's like.
She has.
On the bus and stuff. I don't know. Like, there's some other people having trouble. And so, out there, which people have.
Yeah, so I don't.
Like, it's not zeroed out. You know, it's not solid. I just, you know, just Kathy gone?
Where's Kathy?
Yeah.
Oh, but.
Did Kathy go back?
I'll fix her. Kathy, you know, she was out today. You want me to go see if I can?
She might as well go past her.
Huh? She might as well go past her.
I think she's been in this guy here for a long time and didn't get out once in a while.
She was trying to go out earlier and got caught.
Huh? Before I came to find you.
She was in here the whole time.
She was talking.
But I had to leave to come look for you.
She was talking environment.
Find me? That's not true. I came to find all y'all.
Uh huh.
We're alive. We're teasing each other about who went to go get who.
I hear her.
I hear her. Ms. Galvin.
Where's she at?
That's a good point.
Mr. Mooney, is Ms. Galvin right out there? She up?
Captain.
Captain Mooney.
Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, Captain. I just got corrected.
All right. So I call this meeting to order. And next, we have the, a public hearing on the release of the stormwater detention facility easement in Seminole Square North Ring, uh, North Wing, um, first of two readings. And Mr. Blair, oh, well, it's not.
Uh. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Edwards is here. Um, I guess we'll do a little tag team here, but just very briefly, in 1985, the city accepted, uh, the stormwater easement, that is, the subject of tonight's public hearing, when Seminole Square Shopping Center was being constructed. The item before you is based on a critical slopes waiver from 2017. Well, it's two critical slopes waivers, um, in which the council agreed to grant the waivers on the condition that both of the recipients would apply to release the 1985 easement, and instead, they will replace it on a site plan with their own easement in which they will be responsible for stormwater detention. And, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just, um, to echo some of that, um, same information, uh, the easement we found is more beneficial to us to release, uh, at this time than it would be for us to hang on to and maintain. So, staff has reviewed it and we've, in consensus with that.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Any questions from council? All right, um, I'm now, well, open the public hearing. Um, is there anyone here who would like to speak on the release of stormwater detention facility easement at Seminole Square North Wing? No? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, no further discussion? All right.
I'm, are we motioning? Sorry.
No, there's no vote tonight.
All right. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Correct.
All right, ne- next, we have a public hearing on the underground utility easement to Dominion Energy at Ragged Mountain Reservoir, um, the first of two.
Excuse me, Mayor, members of council. Um, Chris Genzek with the Shawsville Department of Parks and Recreation, uh, here to present the item for giving an easement to Dominion Energy for undergrounding the power line that goes up to the dam at Ragged Mountain. Um, right now, the wire goes up a really steep rocky hill. Um, the proposal is to come around and follow the new roadbed, uh, put the wire underground. Um, they're going to, I believe, Mr. Buckley here is from Dominion, but they're undergrounding, I think, the entire system from Fontaine up the mountain. Um, one of the big reasons is that, that the dam's up there and we don't want the dam to lose power and have any issues. So, staff's reviewed this, um, we have no issues with it. We support granting the easement to Dominion to underground this, and they're going to do it, um, at, on their dime. It's free to the city to have this done.
Okay.
We're just laughing.
All right, any, um, clarifying question?
No. Just couldn't agree more. This is really great.
They, they did Greenleaf Park and they did Meadow Creek Gardens recently, so we've worked with them very well on these in the park system.
We can work on the rest. Just kidding.
All right. All right, now, I will open, um, the public hearing for the underground utility easement to Dominion Energy at Ragged Mountain Reservoirs. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Any further discussion? Okay. Thank you.
Does this go back to consent in the future as well?
Yes.
This will be consent.
Two readings?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next, we have a public hearing on the zoning text amendment to revise definition of amusement centers and allowable zoning classifications. Ms. President.
Brian. Do you know we're going this fast? Brian. He's coming.
Do you want to just?
You see him?
He's coming.
He's coming.
It's just sort of lightning round right now.
Lightning round, man. Get on it while it's good.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a proposal for a zoning text amendment for amusement center regulations. Um, amusement centers cover, uh, things that we commonly know as pool, uh, facilities, where you play pool or, uh, arcades. Um, Planning Commission heard this at their meeting in December and voted five to zero to recommend that it be approved with one modification, which is that, um, in all of the proposed zones where we proposed allowing this, that it be allowed by provisional use permit, staff had recommended it be, by special use permit in the corner district, but staff doesn't really have any issues with the recommendation the commission put forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, I think I, I had a question about the, is the number two bullet under the section, um, in the event of more than four incidents at the property who require police service or response, is that normally in, was that an update or was that in the original?
That is a part of, we, we took that from the music hall section, so it leads it to the discretion of the zoning administrators to whether or not to do it. So, you know, as I said, call for service for someone who's having a medical emergency obviously doesn't count for that, but that's already, we're pulling that from an existing section of code that regulates music halls in the city.
Okay. So, this, if they had four or more incidents in a two-month period, that, um, their permit would be suspended for 300, so they couldn't operate?
They could not operate the, the amusement center portion of their business. So if they're operating a restaurant with arcade games on the side and they have a number of incidents, we would force them to take the games out. The restaurant could still operate if it was a by right use, they can continue to operate.
All right. All right, um, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any, um, clarifying questions for, for council?
I had a question around, if we're going to move forward with this, the second reading goes on consent, how do we determine that we want to go in the direction of adopting the Planning Commission's recommendation, because they made a change?
I think that would be written in the consent agenda.
Okay. I'm just saying. Are my colleagues aligned with that? I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any, um, incidents where this has been enforced?
The music halls? One music hall?
It seems like there was a situation with a music hall in Belmont. Is that the one we're talking about or, no, different one?
Okay. All right. Um, any further discussion? All right. Next, we have, um, a public hearing on zoning text amendments to modify the definition of dwelling unit, first of two readings. Oh, no, sorry. Read the wrong one. So, next, we have the zoning text amendment on street designation in a mixed-use zones. First of two reading.
Uh, so as you stated, this is a zoning text amendment to clarify, uh, section 541 of the zoning ordinance that lays out which streets are designated as primary and linking streets in our mixed-use districts. Um, it came from, uh, recognition that the, one of the streets, uh, a fairly prominent street in the downtown north section was omitted from the lists. Um, so we've went, we went through and scrubbed the entire section, um, added a lot of streets that weren't caught before and, uh, put them all in there. I know there was a question about kind of how we made the designation between primary and linking, and most of these were continuations where the road changed. And so, we did the, uh, we took the, you know, whatever the designation of the road on the other side of the intersection, continued it forward. Um, the only one that I think new street that we've, uh, pulled here, other than City Walk Way, which I think is a private street, um, and is designated as linking, is Hillsdale Drive, um, which was, you know, a new street that was created since the section of code, uh, was written, and that one was designated as a primary street because we felt that it was, you know, that was the character of that street. So, everything else is, should be just clarifications or additions, uh, to those lists to just, you know, get it up to current standards. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Planning Commission recommended that this be approved.
I have a question about the Cherry Avenue corridor. Is it the, um, it says it permits increased development on busier streets without fostering a strip commercial appearance. So what is currently there, um, would that no longer be allowed? Is that what that?
No, we're not, we're not touching that section of the code at all. So that's just the intent of the, the intent language of that code.
Okay.
All we're looking at is that listing of primary streets and linking streets.
Okay.
Um, you know, any change to that, I think, would come following, you know, guidance of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I'm just to remind the council is that, that Cherry Avenue and the Fife Alnibid Association are in the process of doing a small area plan.
Yeah.
So they're talking about what kind of zoning they feel is appropriate for their corridor as well, so.
All right. Um, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the zoning text amendment on street designations and mixed-use zones. Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right, closing the public hearing. Any, um, additional question? Counsel? No? All right. Next, we have zoning text amendment to modify the definition of a dwelling unit, um, first of two reason, readings. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, Ms. Creasy, Neighborhood Development Services. Um, at the Planning Commission's December 11th meeting, a zoning text amendment was initiated and reviewed regarding dwelling unit types. Um, and this came forward, uh, based, as a response to, um, the latest Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, um, where a determination was made that the city's zoning ordinance does not clearly define certain uses as dwelling units. Um, specifically, it was determined that under the current regulations, that a fraternity is not clearly defined as a dwelling unit, and that was overturning a decision that had been in place by the zoning administrator. Um, this determination could also be, uh, applicable to like uses such as boarding houses and other type uses. So, aside from height and setback requirements, the allowable number of dwelling units per acre, the DUA, um, is one of the primary factors in determining the maximum allowable uses for properties in a district. Um, existing DUA allowances are there to help limit, um, impacts that can occur to neighborhoods. Um, boarding houses, for an example, boarding houses generally have more occupancy allowances than, um, than other types of dwelling units, and thus arguably have some impacts on neighborhoods. So the determination that's been put forward, um, through the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, has the opportunity, well, currently with the interpretation, um, one could have a number of dwelling units on a site, and then they could have additional fraternities, boarding houses, and some other units or uses that aren't clearly defined as dwelling units per that definition. Um, so, at the Planning Commission hearing on December 11th, uh, staff took forward a number of changes to address dwelling units and try and clarify a number of things. Ultimately, the commission was only comfortable with moving forward with specific things that dealt with the situation at hand. And that was, uh, two items. One would be a change to zoning code 34-6, which would clearly state what uses would be counted as one dwelling unit, um, as well as a change to the definition. So during the Board of Zoning Appeals case, um, there was one clause in the dwelling unit definition that caused concern to them, and that was, uh, a notation that noted for the exclusive use of the occupants. Um, and so that created some concern about whether a fraternity or a place where others could come in to eat or have other activities, um, was exclusive or not, and so, um, there was a question as to whether that counted as a dwelling unit or not. Um, so the commission is bringing for, or recommended, um, moving forward with two small items, um, to clarify the definition of the dwelling unit, as well as to specify what uses are counted as dwelling units. And they have also agreed to hold a work session on other items that, um, we brought forward concerning dwelling units, um, that were a little more complicated. They wanted to address the concern at hand, um, and then go back and dig deeper into some other code items following that. So you all are scheduled for a public hearing on this, this evening, and I am here to help with any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? No? All right. At this time, I'll open up the, um, public hearing for the zoning text amendment modifying the definition of a dwelling unit. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter?
I just would like clarification. So a fraternity, under your recommendation now, a fraternity or a boarding house will be considered a dwelling unit or won't be considered a dwelling unit?
Sure.
It wasn't quite clear.
No problem. Sorry. It, it is a bit strange. Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals made a determination that a fraternity would not be a dwelling unit. And so staff has brought forward text to try to clarify the code so that it would be counted as a dwelling unit.
And a boarding house, same?
Same then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor, members of council. I'm Valerie Long. Um, I'm with Williams Mullen. Our firm represents the owner of land and the applicant involved in the Board of Zoning Appeals case that Ms. Creasy referenced. That was not mentioned in your staff report, but I was the one who spoke at the Planning Commission meeting as a member of the public representing our client, so I wanted to add some clarification to that. Our client has owned this land for over a hundred years and has been paying taxes on it ever since. It's the location of the Pi Cap Alpha fraternity. It's their very first chapter in the country, and their national ownership corporation has owned it the entire time and is proposing to renovate the fraternity house. It's a, uh, historic structure. It's in a historic zoning district. We're proposing to redevelop that property and an adjacent vacant lot by right. We're not asking to increase the amount of dwelling units or the density, no special use permits involved. We will have to go through the Board of Architectural Review. We've already started that process for both lots, and it's been very well received. As Ms. Creasy noted, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, voted four to one in November and agreed with our decision, our interpretation of the zoning ordinance, which has been in effect at least since the ordinance was last comprehensively updated in 2003. May seem odd, but technically, under the ordinance, fraternity houses in similar quasi-residential uses are not regulated for purposes of density. They're regulated by special use permit. Happy to talk more about it. It's complicated, but that was the conclusion that the BZA came to. Our client has relied on that decision. We've been relying on that interpretation of the ordinance for many months because we were confident that was the correct decision, but we've been particularly relying on it since that decision on November 15th. We thought that staff misinterpreted. We thought that staff misinterpreted, so we had to appeal it. We didn't have any chance after many meetings with staff trying to explain the situation, and again, the BZA ruled in favor of our position. We're here today, though, because it appears that this zoning amendment is intentionally designed to try and prevent our client from benefiting from the, from that decision. The city had a 30-day period under state law and under the zoning ordinance when it could have appealed that decision to circuit court. We've confirmed that that was not appealed, so under Virginia law, that decision is final. And there's a lot of case law talking about the importance of landowners being able to rely on the finality of Board of Zoning Appeals decisions. That's all we're asking for. We're asking that if council is inclined to adopt this amendment, that you include and express exclusion, exempting our client and its land from the change that this would affect, because it would have the effect of forcing us to have to fight to not have it be applied to our site plan application, which we've already submitted. We've incurred significant resources in preparing that site plan application. We have our local architects, we have our local civil engineers, we have other consultants, surveyors, and others on the team. Significant expenses. I'd be happy to discuss it more. We think the only fair, equitable, and reasonable approach is to exempt us. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Are there any clarifying questions?
I guess I'm just confused on what impact it has on what they're doing, like just this decision. What is it they're trying to do that now that with this decision, it's getting in the way? I'm just confused.
They're, they are requesting to put additional residential units on that site, and so none of the people who would live in the fraternity house would be counted, so that unit would not be counted, so they would have the fraternity house in addition to the by right allowable dwelling units on that site. So instead of, instead of having, being able to add, they want to add five units, they would only be able to add four units because the fraternity would be a unit.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a site plan for, they have another change to this site where they're putting underground parking, another case that went to the BZA that staff is not bringing forward any code change for at this time, and that's the site plan that we have in right now. We don't have the site plan for the additional units on the site.
But this recommendation is coming in response to this case?
It's coming in response to that, yes, because the BZA pointed out a concern in our code, and we're bringing that concern forward to remove that so that it's clear that this, that fraternities, as well as boarding houses and other like uses, would be counted as one dwelling unit.
Instead of not a dwelling unit?
Correct.
All right. Any other question?
Mayor Walker, I was wondering if we could get some comments from Mr. Blair. Just, is there, is there any problem with grandfathering a property? That's one question, and then I'm just interested in your opinion about this process.
Well, to your first question, number one, certainly, we could look at ways to craft the ordinance if you did not want it to apply to this particular property in terms of the effective date of the ordinance. As to your second question, I think, and I might ask Ms. Creasy to also chime in, I think there have been issues with the dwelling unit definition for years. Ms. Robertson did a zoning code audit and mentioned this in part of her audit as dwelling, that is, that was a definition that needed attention. I think it's, this is in response to the BZA decision, but there are, there have been other issues related to this definition of dwelling unit.
Yes, I mean, the dwelling, dwelling unit is, it's very complicated, and we have a lot of very creative developers that come in the community and see the wording in different ways. And so, so it's something that we've even looked deeper into, but the commission wasn't quite ready to bring anything more extensive forward on that. But it is something that, that has been concerning in the past, and we have a concrete statement from the BZA that said that this terminology, if that were to be removed, that the clarity would be taken care of, and so we brought that forward so that we could at least address things in the short term.
So their decision-making was based on just frankly what it says in the words, in terms of this is what it states?
Correct. And that is, that is their charge, right? That is their, yes. They're, they're, they're very, it's very specific to the wording that's on the paper, and, and that statement was where they hung their hat on the decision that they made, and so we're bringing that forward to remove that, and as well as put a clarity statement in there so that it's clear that these are dwelling units.
And when the Planning Commission voted five to zero, were they also considering this specific case? Did that come up as a question?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
One of the commissioners was in the room for the BZA meeting, so.
But when they made their decision?
They knew about this case, yes.
Right, and that, that they didn't ask for it to be separated out from this consideration?
They didn't, okay, that specifically.
Mayor Walker, I have another question, and I, I do remember that when we were changing our ordinance language with regards to building heights and how we measured building heights, Attorney Robertson had gone to, to some length to create a date threshold when it would apply after, that it would only apply to projects that hadn't been approved or after a certain date, or that had been approved after a certain date, but those that had gotten in with, before that threshold, they could stay under the original ordinance because development projects take a long time to plan and finance and get out of the ground. So there is that, I guess, that, that idea of needing to be able to rely upon the existing ordinance.
But that site plan hasn't been, has, it hasn't, we haven't received it yet.
They have submitted a site plan. We have a site plan for one building for the parking. We don't have a site plan for the additional units.
Oh, okay.
For the dwelling units on that block? Correct. I understand.
Well, and just to, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but where your head it is,
is there a vested right at this point? The vested right, in our opinion, would attach if there was a site plan that had been approved, but as of now, there's not a vested right per, per Virginia Code 152-2307. To go back to what you were saying, though, concerning the height interpretation, I think there was an effective date clause in that ordinance that, in effect, I don't like to use the term grandfather because that has a very specific meaning for non-conforming use, but it, in effect, exempted projects that were, that had some sort of approval up to a certain date.
Are there any other questions?
No, this is our first reading. I mean, there seems to be some disagreement about some things, and if we get clarification?
Yeah, we, we do need to get clarified because the applicant is saying that there is a site plan, and, and our staff person is saying there isn't.
There is a site plan. It just doesn't include the other units on.
So, back on January 22nd, but on the regular agenda, is what I'm feeling, right?
Yeah, just to give us a little bit more time to think this through. I mean, for me.
So I have a, so the, the site plan that you all have, that you all have received does not include the changes that would be in, you know, modifying this definition?
It, the one, the one that, that I've seen includes the parking structure, the underground parking structure, which was a previous BZA case.
Okay.
Ms. Creasy, there are certainly other fraternities and sororities that have undergone modification, added structures recently, at least one on Preston Place, and others in that corridor. It's my understanding that some of them were not allowed to add residential components, so is that because of the same piece of code, or what, why was that known that they couldn't do it there, and it was not the case here?
Well, there, there are some fraternities where the special permit that's been on file, some have had special permits for a long time, and they designate a certain number of residents that can be in there. Fraternities themselves, as well as boarding houses, are, have been considered a single unit, a single unit of housing where people live for a very long time interpretation-wise. And so if, this is actually one of the first cases where we've had additional units, well, we've, we have had one or two others where there's additional units on site. There's the main fraternity house, and then there's a, a separate unit on, on site that holds other fraternity or sorority-type activities on it. But this is one, the first one we've had where it's to multiple units, or whatever they are called. Currently, the fraternity is not, the rest are units, on a site. So it's, it is a little bit unique in that way.
So is it possible to, for us to just put this on the consent agenda, and if you all get information and you want to pull it, that we can do that?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah. So is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. So next, we have a resolution, approval of council meeting schedule for 2019, first of one reading.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Again, before you, you have a proposed regular meeting schedule for 2019. There are, your meetings are set for the first and third Mondays of each month at 6:30 PM, per state law, as well as the city code. If any of these meetings fall on a recognized holiday, they are moved to the Tu, next Tuesday. There are three such meetings proposed in this schedule. Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, in honor of Dr. King's Day. February 19th, 2019, that's, the Monday before is, is recognized, I think it's Washington's birthday, but it's commonly called President's Day. And then Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, that preceding Monday is Labor Day. Also wanted to bring the council's attention that Councilor Hill has proposed, traditionally, your break has been the first meeting in August. However, she has proposed that instead you have your break after July 1st, 2019, so you would not be meeting on July 15th, 2019, but you would meet the first week of August this year.
I have one question for colleagues to just raise, which is, we've talked about it kind of in, in the flow of things on the dais a few times, but there's the idea, given especially, three of us have young kids, of, of having every other meeting be what they do in the county, where it'd be during the day. And you, it would, it would, there are arguments for each one, having it at night, having during the day, but one of the arguments during the day is that it's more accessible than at night. Probably no perfect thing. I know in Arlington County where I grew up, they do them on Saturday mornings, is how they do their county board meetings, for like maximum accessibility, but then it creates all kinds of other issues with, like, there were no perfect time when people have busy lives, but I, and I'm sorry to, I probably should have gone everybody ahead of time and thought this through, but I, I didn't have, I didn't think to do that, so. But it has come up here a few times when we've talked about our meetings, I think probably at least twice in the last few months, and maybe it's not prepped, it's not developed enough right now for us to make a decision on it, but I would raise it that we have talked about it up here, and there's been some interest, is basically doing what they do in the county, where they, I believe they alternate.
So one, one of the two meetings a month is at 1:00 in the afternoon?
Yeah, or maybe it would be a little later, because I think, I mean, their meetings, I think, go very long, those meetings. They tend to go six or seven hours a month, I don't think ours.
So do ours.
Probably. Well, but maybe we could, maybe we could try, yeah, I don't know why they're that, I guess that's right, Mr. Don, maybe there'd be a way of, I'm not interested in doing that, but, you know, I mean, it, it's just something to think about is, and, and it would, it could break up the, the rhythm of them in a good way, just, just a thought.
Well, I, I like that idea. I think, though, if we had our meetings, if we followed suit in regards to having them much earlier in the day, because we have a lot of, a lot more people rather, who come to our meetings, and then, you know, we get into the issue of people are working during the day, which is even while we tried to flex the times, I think that would present a larger issue for our constituency, because I think, I think the argument could be made that we may have a much more involved constituency who enjoy coming to our meetings, or like to be involved, and know what's going on for a variety of different reasons. And I think if we had them earlier, which I'm not opposed to the idea, I just think we would need to find the, the sweet spot, quote unquote.
Well, I could see like the public comment portion of a earlier meeting actually being at the end of the meeting, like really focusing that community matters piece when we know people might have more accessibility, and maybe just getting some of the business out of the way. Let's be honest, there's only a handful of people here right now for this business, I'm just observing, and it's pretty consistent how it is most weeks, and then during those, those hours, we consider the peak. I'm not sure we're going to decide this tonight, but I appreciate you raising it, and.
No, I would just say, Ms. like, I think, because Mayor, Mr. Signer, when he was mayor, and Ms. Gavin, correct, both of you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we had a similar discussion.
We did.
Um, work sessions. About work sessions being early, but I thought the, the discussion was, or the rebuttal that we got from members of the public was that for those items that are very contentious, they want to be, they wanted to be able to speak before the items, because they didn't want, they feel as if we didn't hear from them. And I think even if we were to have, like, we do public comments, uh, not public, um, public hearings, rather, excuse me. When we have our public hearings, people want to be able to speak before we talk, and if we had them at 3:00 o'clock, the likelihood of them being here, or even 5:00 o'clock for that matter, would be difficult for them.
I think we, we'd, we would have to agree that in, in, public hearings would have to be at night, that evening, I mean, that anytime the public has engaged with us, it must be based on the convenience of the public, but items that were based on a, a work session where there was no vote, and we were hashing things out, that was have, that could happen during the day. And, and I, I think Vice Mayor Hill's idea has merit that the community matters would then come after that, but we would not, we would not have work on those days where we would be actually taking a vote, and certainly not have public hearings.
I also, I also want to say, I think those are very well-taken concerns, and, and I, we didn't debate this fully the last time. One of the things was debating just including the work sessions, not having the median city space and putting them back in the full view, you know, but things like that. One of the things I would say is that one of the, you know, one of the powers of the, of the mayor, working with staff, is to, is to plan ahead and say what items are of great interest. Like, remember we made the decision on the deer, and we knew that there were going to be 40 people speaking, and like, you know, the, the Ragged Mountain, and so when you know there will be an item of great interest, then you would, you would, you know, like you frequently are setting the agenda around those sorts of things, so there would still be that capacity to think meetings ahead and say, well, they're, you know, but it just would.
Can I say one thing?
I'd be also very curious about what staff would think about this, too, because this is kind of coming out of nowhere, and I, so, yes.
Yeah, doesn't, I don't think this is something we're going to get done tonight.
No, 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 I think we're just having a discussion to a certain extent.
Just raising it.
One other, I, I mean, I, I would say, I'm actually, I'm really intrigued by that thought, and I agree with you, Mayor Walker, we, we're not going to settle that part tonight, but this is, we're having a discussion, if you could belabor me for one, one more moment. I think a point of privilege for me, and I think maybe for some of us, because we can figure out how to make more flexibility, I think about, for me, like, I don't teach, I mean, I'm a full-time professor, but I don't, my classes aren't on Mondays, so I'm like, whatever time, it works, but if we are, as we talk about future councils, I think if we do have the meetings early in the day, it prohibits some people who will potentially be wanting to run, because if they work at, you know, a, a, a place like Full Line, for example, will they be able to get off their job twice a month and not work from 1:00 or from 3:00 PM through the rest of the evening? Like, that makes it tough, and I think we've had that discussion to a certain extent, but keeping that in mind, I think, again, moving it earlier, and I think that's why a part of our. I think again, moving it earlier, and I think that's why, a part of the reason why in the county, I mean, they've had, they haven't had a, a representation of a variety of different members of the community because of their meeting times.
And, and I do think that you have to make those decisions on a council by council basis. I think that this group of five could come up with a work class this group, but I would never want to say that we're going to tax that next group of five with what we've agreed upon because they have different, everyone has different circumstances. So I would only be thinking we'd be deciding this among ourselves for this group of us working together.
So for tonight?
For tonight, we are just gonna, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, for tonight.
So I, I'm not opposed to the July 15th, but I'm always, you know, last year too was thinking about August and, you know, whatever will be going on in the month before. And so I did send an email about, you know, the September, which is what we did this year, but.
Yeah, my intention of having pulling it in was actually to try to get away from the August, the first August meetings, we ended up changing it this year. And I'm like I said to you all, and I've, I've said in other cases, the reason I was looking at the July, one of the July dates is just because those of us, not even just us as council members, but staff who have children who are on summer schedules, it does allow the opportunity to travel with a family. I know that affects me very personally, but I don't think I'm alone in that. And that was why I was focusing on just those few options we have where kids are really out of school, which is really the last June and then the, the two July meetings. And so we're just trying to find an opportunity that would allow for that, just to have an opportunity to kind of get a break while the kids are out of school.
Yeah, I remember my wife definitely bringing that point up. I forgot about that. And Ashley's watching. I'm just kidding, I didn't forget about that. I mean, I, I think that.
That's a very good point. That's a really good point.
Thank you, thank you for saving me.
Alright, so, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the meeting schedule for 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote. It carries five to zero. Alright, next we have a report, the establishment of a priority setting commission to inform council funding priorities.
Good evening. Good evening. Cackedemic, Acting Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to present, introduce this idea of a priority setting commission to you all and hope that Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill will join the conversation and, and answer any questions that I'm unable to about the commission. Responding to concerns that the ABRT process was not meeting the city's most pressing needs or meeting the needs of constituents, Mayor Walker convened an ad hoc work group. I believe our first meeting was in August. I might be wrong about that, but I thought our first meeting was in August. And we have three staff, I can see you're thinking about it.
Yeah, I think it was before.
Okay, July, maybe. We have three staff and we have seven community members who are part of that ad hoc work group. And this work group was charged by the mayor to consider all aspects of the ABRT process. We were fortunate to have had a fairly significant review of internal processes of the ABRT completed by a Batten School class for actually a full semester lab last year. So we had those reports to benefit our, and sort of launch our work. We did adopt their primary recommendations as a work group, but places to consider changes. And the work of the, of the work group continues. I think that's an important piece. We've tackled lots and lots of issues. We've had some very robust conversations about how to move forward. And the most consistent theme that comes up is using a priority setting process to target the city's funding of nonprofits as opposed to a more generalized approach to supporting nonprofit work. And so the conversation inevitably led to who should establish those priorities? Should they be part of our strategic planning process? Should they be, should staff be the, the group of folks who identify the priorities? And it became clear that, that this work group believed that there should be an independent council-appointed commission to review a variety of sets of data that are in the memo every year to establish three to five funding priorities that then would dictate how the ABRT money would be used. So because this commission would need to essentially be starting in January or February of this year in order to complete its work to produce a report in May or June to council for your review, to, and for this June, in order to influence the rulemaking and process for whatever ABRT funding process got set up for fiscal year 21. We felt, the work group felt there was some urgency to come before council to get permission to move forward with this priority setting commission prior to the completion of the entire revised process, which will inevitably and eventually come before you all as a complete package.
Question, is there any, in this plan for this, for the work of this group, is there any process with the full council that is planned at the early stages? Because typically with, you know, something that would have this kind of impact, like anything other, otherwise budgetarily we do, there's lots of engagement with the five members of council so that you get, so it's not like we get this product at the end of several months and there's been no, I mean, that's probably the core, most important part of our jobs is to weigh in in every aspect of budget process. So is there any, is that planned that?
I, I can't say that that's planned at this phase, but we've had conversations about ways to engage council, community members and the nonprofit community as we continue to unfold the process. But I don't think any plans, that's why I'm looking at both of you to make sure that I'm accurate about that.
No, I think the conversation that we had about, you know, getting the, changing the process to present to council as a whole to, we, it would be presented just as anything else for us to look at and discuss. And if there were pieces of it that we, that you all were not open to, it would be the same process as any other thing that came before.
If I, I just have a, my question, and I asked it early today though, is usually when a coun- council would, we would have gotten some kind of resolution that would have identified clearly what the charge is, what the composition is, meaning like who will be on this commission, what groups would be represented, that the council would pick them? And that there would then be like a timeline to get, get it done. Right now, we, I, I feel uncomfortable approving any, something when I don't have a tangible product to approve. And just giving blanket direction means there's also lack of direction. So is it possible for, for something more kind of refined and detailed could come back to us so that we, we then know, oh, we need to, as was mentioned early tonight, we, we should get representatives from the nonprofit organizations on here. We should, and, and all our other groups we've had would say that you have to be two people from this category or this group. We did that with the citizen review board.
Well, this process, we would open up the, the board and commission and council would approve them as a whole, the members who, who were on it. We also wanted to be a little flexible, but we were clear that there needed to be, to see who would apply and be interested. So it wasn't the same individuals that may have had influence in, in the past. But we would get all the applications as we normally received them to review.
I agree though, I have the same, I, I have concerns about that too, because it's basically saying that, as I understand, there's two, two members of council. It, it's different from having two members of council have, have a working group or some kind of task force, which does happen. It's starting, it's conferring on that sort of formal sanction by council and then saying this is going to set a process forth and then we're going to be getting a report and it's giving direction by council, but then council doesn't have any involvement. It's not very transparent. I mean, we, but typically with, I can't think, like the Blue Ribbon Commission, you know, had the, the council appointed the members of it, they had a charge to produce a report, they were, they had a, you know, staff was tasked, was overseeing them. And then we were involved with the final, with the final product. And there was a resolution and it kind of went through the, the normal channels that you would do. Like this is saying, there's a, there's a task force that two members of council are involved in, some members of staff, but council as the body hasn't, isn't involved in any of the other aspects of it. But then we're expecting a report and then we will approve the members as they're nominated by, I guess, the two members of council. That's not.
No, that's not what we're saying. We, we will have an application process like any other board and commission. We will post it, people will submit their applications and we'll go through it.
But is there a charter for the commission, a resolution that's operating under?
There isn't, because I, I don't, there isn't yet, but we were at the point in the group, well, there are two things. One, originally I thought the, the group that we have now would be the group that would possibly present options to council about which organizations we would be funding. You all said no to that, came back and said there would be a separate group that would set priorities for funding. You all agreed to that. And this is that stage. This group is now saying that in order for us to continue to create what we need to present to you all, that we need to know what will be the focus point since it is, you know, taking on that direction of, you know, in major investments versus these small investments in a lot of places, which is what has consistently come up in, in the group under the current plan.
I thought that the timeline was really the driver for this phase because we knew that we had to form this group. Whereas I cert- I, I, I hear where this is coming from. I think if we had time on our side, we would like to present a whole comprehensive piece of both. This is the process that's being considered and this is the group of people that we would recommend that, you know, the category, categories to be filled that'll sit on this commission. And I think that certainly is an area, and I, I hear where you're, where you're asking for that. But I think it more is the timeline for this next cycle ABRT. As much as we've frozen this one fiscal year, in order for us to not have to freeze another fiscal year, there's just a timeline by which a group has to be pulled together to identify those priorities. And then there was some, some consensus that it felt like that could happen independent of the process being finalized. But at the same time, I, I hear for anyone who's not at these meetings, I can understand where there's a little lack of understanding because we haven't kind of confirmed and finalized that whole end to end process. And so I guess I would welcome feedback on how we can get to that point and may not.
You can do it.
And, and I just, because I mean, it's in, I read in the staff memo that there's a Batten report, but I haven't, I, I still don't know what is the improvement? What, what is the problem that's being solved? It's not clear. We know that there was a study done, but we're not seeing it. And we're also kind of, it's, it's almost like we're the cart before the horse. We, we just need, I mean, is it possible that the ABRT could be reformed? We're getting told that it has to be out and out replaced. And I, and yet I haven't seen the argument for reform or replacement or one or the other. There's been a decision made and yet this is a significant, significant change, of course, that affects budgeting for lots of organizations in the community that have served our people for a long time. So I just want to, I want process. I really do want to see process. Now, what, what this staff memo says that it wants direction from council, I don't think we need to stop anything, but could we get back from the work group a dra- a resolution that we could then act on as you're building the plane while flying? So that we have an idea what that, what is the specific charter that you're looking for? Is it, and, and what, what were the citations of what studies were used to justify that recommendation of that char- of that charge? So that we're substantiating our decisions. Right now, I don't have that background. And I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to hold this up, but I do think we need to have some structure.
Yeah, and I think, and we could be done very efficiently. It could end up that, that we end up mostly in the same place, that the, that the people have done all the service, that when they end up applying to council to be duly appointed, however you're saying, Mayor Walker, that it'll work, that they end up being given a lot of credit and most of those people end up being put on it, whatever, that the, but the, the danger I would see if we didn't go through that, not only the lack of transparency, but that it would be a lot of wasted effort. Because the point of building some kind of support over the, all, all the work that these folks are doing is if we haven't had buy-in and council hasn't seen the Batten memo and we don't know what this is about and it just produced us at the end of nine months of work, but there's, it doesn't have the buy-in in the, of, of most, of every other thing like this, then it ends up, we end up not supporting it because it comes out of nowhere. And then it's a lot of not, not, you know, it's a lot of wasted work for these folks. So we don't want that to happen. So I would suggest that, like in, I mean, it would seem like you could do a lot of this by the next meeting, or maybe, I don't want to hang things up.
I'm just wondering if there is just, because this is so new to everyone. And I, I think that as much as we're not finalized with this process, I feel like we've really set up pretty, like foundationally where we know what, the direction we're trying to go and the categories that we've created and why we've gotten to that point. I'm wondering if we can just summarize and inform council with kind of, this is where we're at to get that read on, is this a direction that we're going to get buy-in at the end of this? Because that's certainly the goal is to, is to kind of be able to move forward given all the time and effort put in. But I think, I think we can do that in short order with the work we've already done, knowing that it's not complete so that everyone is not feeling like they're in the dark. Because I, I certainly can appreciate, and it's hard when you're in it to, that you're, to not recognize what others aren't, aren't recognizing because they're not in those conversations. And there is a lot that we've discussed, but I, I, I'm realizing into questions even early this morning and then some of it gotten from the public. I, I think there is a lot of not understanding because we just haven't been able to, you know, had a forum where we'd be able to provide that information, so.
And the other big piece is coordinating with the county.
Well, the county did not decided that they were going to continue on the regular ABRT process.
So this is mean we're splitting forever completely from joint funding with the county?
If it's approved.
That's, that's a huge change.
They are going to look, no, they are going to evaluate if they will participate after they see what process we've developed.
Again, and so we're saying that we, we want to see that process.
But that was public, that was in the paper, it was on the news.
I'm just saying, we just need a, we need, we need to see, I need to see something that just says this is what.
So this commission, if this commission is formed, it is the commission to give the complete package. If you all do not vote for it at that point, then it will be the same, or if it's revised as anything else.
All I'm, I'm just, Mayor Walker, I just wanted to say that I would approve the commissioning of a body to do this work if I knew what exactly its charge was, the reason for that charge, the composition of that body, who is appointing them? And then who is going to be, because it was in the staff memo, it was mentioned that there needed to be a facilitator possibly. Is this, is this, is this, is if this is going to be managed by a facilitator? Who is managing the contract? Who is, who is going to be identifying how to?
But it says staff or facilitator.
And so, but I think that decision needs to be clear. It's not an either or, when we approve something, we need to know.
Of all the specifics.
But it's, we're not at a part, process that this is not something that, it's so different from what we have been doing that, and I think that, you know, the few emails that we received this afternoon about that, that what we're saying is in order to present you with the full package, we could have put in some hypothetical priorities and said if these type of things was funded, this is what it could potentially look like. But in order for us to be ready for the next budget cycle, we would have to, to be able to present you for it to be in a timeline that would work, we would need for this commission to be.
And, and just, I just want to clarify, I'm not even asking for what the priorities are. I want to know the process to get to those priorities. I want to know who's doing it.
I think we can answer all of the questions that you identified that you would need in as part of a resolution except for composition, which is the conversation we ended our last meeting on. And so I think we could get there fairly readily and certainly in time for the next meeting to have that conversation. And we could provide, as Vice Mayor Hill suggests, an outline for where we are in the process about why it is that, that a priority setting commission would have such an impact on the, on the proposed process. That would certainly be.
It is two parallel processes. There is this priority setting, which arguably can be done independent of the process finishing its development. Because wherever we land, I, I mean, council will just decide it may not want to do any of this at all, but this, they are, they are going to be like hand in hand in terms of, we're proposing that we're going to have a more focused approach on how we allocate dollars.
And, and what I heard tonight, and we do have community partners, they at least need to be in that conversation.
But we need to also look at that they are not able to drive the conversation.
Well, this sounds not transparent. I mean, they can drive it as much as anybody. Well, this sounds not transparent. I mean, they can drive it as much as anybody who comes to our meetings. I mean, if there's some-
No.
But, but see, I, I, I think that sounds like this has been, this is being hidden from a lot of the folks who would have a grievance about it. And that we, we may end up voting for the more concentrated approach. It sounds like a very bold discussion that is, this reminds me of like what happens when the federal government does base realignment and closure, where they have a whole system in place to deal with the, with the opposition that comes when they start closing certain military bases, like, because there's lots of constituents. So it, it might be the right idea, what you're talking about. But I don't think that we can hide the amount of engagement that we're gonna have to have because I know what happened when we, when the municipal ban was, was cut. I mean, it took, it, so I think that I, it sounds to me like we're gonna have-
But we're not trying to hide anything. We needed, we, this came before council at this time, just based on the timeline to be ready for the next budget cycle. And that was a conversation that we had with staff and-
But are these gonna be open meetings where, where everywhere there's public, no, but the meetings of this commission where, where are, you know, are the records f- fiable?
It'd be a, it'd be a board or commission appointed by the full council.
And we would certainly recommend-
Where you'll take the applications. I'm hearing a mixture of things now, sit on this group. Uh, I would say that, um, it's clear to me that regardless of whether the existing group, you were to end up saying, yes, we should, um, make all of these changes to the process or not, the council does need to, for the future of ABRT, look at a priority setting group, right? Um, because the, the feedback from staff for some time has been, one of the shortcomings of the current system is that, uh, the agencies themselves decide what outcomes they're going to measure and then they take credit or blame for those outcomes that they chose. Um, we should be in the business and local government of saying, here's the needles we want to move. And, and if you're moving those needles, then we want to give you the dollars to do it. That I think there's some question about, uh, how many markers you're gonna choose, what those metrics are. And that, I think, first needs to be endorsed by the council, that that cascades down from your strategic plan, right? So that, that's the part of the message I'd like to have be a part of your deliberation, is you have a strategic plan and if there's a priority setting to be done, I hope that you charge whatever group is gonna look at priorities with looking first at the strategic plan.
Well, and, and thank you, Mr. Murphy, but it, it is not eff, eff, effective and efficient for this council to be writing its parameters of the, of the work of that commission. That's why a resolution comes to us that says specifically, it should be following the, the goals and objectives of the strategic plan. This staff memo does not say that. The staff memo even says that the goals and objectives that this commission might find is gonna change the strategic plan.
Well-
So that was, that was implied in some, one of the statements.
But we were just having the conver, well, only we were there. But, um, the Assistant City Manager, Leslie Beauregard, just asked about just, you know, whether this was a different track, parallel track. Hopefully, anything that we would approve would be aligned with, um, what the changes that we're gonna make in the strategic plan, um, coming up, you know, and the, I think it's the first quarter, quarter of the year.
I think we need guidance, to be perfectly honest, about whether if, if we have a commission and we get past this hurdle and we can define what the commission's job is, what it is we want them to review, how it is they want, we want them to report out to us, how they conduct community engagement. And they look at all of these data sources and they identify a problem that is not already in our strategic plan. I would think that the council would be particularly interested in something that we might have, that big that we might have missed or might have emerged since the planning was completed. And so that's merely, that's what I meant by influencing the strategic plan, was that if something would come up from reviewing all these sources of data that was not already contemplated in the strategic plan, I think we'd have a collective interest in paying attention to that.
I think we just need a little bit more process. And I don't, it's not meant to gum up the works, but I think we need to insulate it. And I think the, the one other thing that's different about this is that it's about the budget. And the budget is the one area where we are so fulsome in our process and we have so many, all councils are there. We don't, like, we do have working groups that develop ideas. Like, we did a open data working group that, that kind of cooked that plan and there were a couple of counselors that were involved. But it just was different because it was one kind of small area of policy council got involved in. They produced a resolution. The council then voted that set forth the process. They didn't, it was kind of like a stage more earlier than saying, here's our budget recommendations, vote for it up or down. And I just think we need a resolution. We could do it.
Well, it, it was, it was like one of the charges of the working group was to give very, very clear statement of what action they wanted council to take.
Right.
And what I'm hearing is that you want us to start crafting your process. And I'm, I'm saying I want you to tell us what that process is so that we can take action on it.
So we're still working on that, but you all, when was this? You all said that you wanted us, the original group, to not be the priority setting group.
Well, and, and, and I'm hearing that it's not going to be. We, we need a commission to do that.
Yes.
But we need a resolution to do that.
I think this can all be accomplished pretty quickly.
It can be very done, done quickly.
We're not, I don't think we're playing, we're just, we're just trying to, yeah.
And that, and I, and I believe that the work can still be done in time for a May or June report.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate the, the work that's gone into this. I just, um, from you, Mayor, and, and Vice Mayor Hill, I just, um, I just, yeah.
But I think in addition to the resolution, I do think it's important for us to provide just an outline of the major decisions that we've made. Because if there is a major concern among this council on this direction, I would rather have us know now so that we can-
Well, it seems prudent that we should send that, a sort of committee, uh, outline before the, the memo goes out for the 24th. So we can do the 22nd.
Is it possible to have the outline by the next meeting? Because it seems like y'all already have that.
Outline is there, just more polishing it up.
So we could just have that and maybe if, uh, Mayor Walker believes it's suitable to put this on the next agenda, I think the conversation will probably go rather quickly because we'll have other information and we could just move forward.
And just have a link to the Batten study, um-
I'd like to see the Batten study.
It's the same Batten study that was sent to everyone last, I think, no, it was like last, not December 16, not 17.
And I'll also, um, say that if we had been able to continue our meetings, Counselor, um, Hill and Signer, we would have had some of these discussions. So, and for the community, you know, this is not a process about hiding anything. Everything will be presented and we'll need the three or more votes, um, to, um, and it's been a very dedicated attempt from staff and community members. Um, very, you know, invested, um, community members in, in this process. I don't think we've had a meeting under four hours. Um, and so we have been spending a lot of time on this. And there is gonna be pushback from, um, from the community if these, um,
We already got emails today from-
If these changes are, um, are made.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was December two, I got my dates wrong, December two, 2017 is when it came out. And I sent it to council, but I can, I'll absolutely resend it. Um, the, there was really compelling information that they did a really beautiful job.
No, that, and I think that would be helpful, again, with the community to see it.
Absolutely. And many of, I mean, many people both fund, who are nonprofits that are funded through ABRT and the actual review team members were interviewed and-
And the review team members I specifically found really compelling in term, and some of them spoke at our last budget cycle and just in terms of some of the opportunity areas that they felt we had with this. And they've been involved, some of them have been involved in this process as well.
Counselor Bellamy, just a, um, a note of clarification. For the next council meeting, we're gonna craft a memo that has a resolution with clarify some of the things that we haven't been able to clarify specifically around membership, I think, um, or, or representation. Um, but you were also talking about doing a memo related to the process. Um, should that be a separate item on the agenda for open discussion, a report, essentially preliminary report from this work group about where we are in terms of our decision-making process? Or should that be incorporated as part of the memo as-
I think it should be all together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, would it be, so honestly, I would love to hear from you all who've been working on it. Would it be easier to just make it all one? Or is the next meeting, is that too soon if it needs to be, you know, maybe first meeting in February? Because I think it's a great idea and I want to see us move forward. But I think for, um, all of our sakes, not just my colleagues on the other end, us having the details, um, as I've learned, more details the better.
We can completely do this before the 22nd.
Okay. I will also say, Ms. Kaki, that was very impressive that you remembered the date while standing here. Without a phone, without a calendar, I was trying to look it up and you had the date in your mind. That was-
That's probably the only one in there, so.
Okay. Anyway, I just want to say thank you, um, Mayor Walker, Vice Mayor Hill and, and Mr. Stenak. Um, I think it's-
Mr. Davidson also has been.
And Mr. Davis, and I think it's just important that there is a record of what we've done and decided and why.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Thanks. All right, thank you.
All right, next we have, um, a report, no presentation, Ravana Authority Quarterly Report. Um, are there-
It's just written for your information, Mayor.
Any question? All right, any other business?
Wow, I just wanted to ask tomorrow night Planning Commission, who, who's gonna be there?
I, I'm, I'm gonna be there.
CIP, is there a third of us, third one?
I'm there.
Tomorrow night?
Do we know how long it will be? So I can get back from, um, class tomorrow, but I just don't know.
What time do we start with them? Six?
Six o'clock. How many public hearings do we have?
Uh, four.
Oh, good grief.
She's saying four.
Yeah, I should, um, you can count, count me in.
I'm sorry, I'm the kayak can go. So there are three of us. And if you, I think it's, anyone who can join, when is the CIP falling in that order? I just, I just think it's important for all of us to at least tune in. I think it's a really important discussion. So we definitely have a quorum to be there for those. I have a babysitter, so.
Yeah, I'll be there with my little ones.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Any other, um, matters by the public? Um, our second matters by the public, is there anyone who would like to speak?
Ms. Creasy provides some clarification as we lead that off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was able to get back and dig a little deeper for the site plan of, for, um, 513 Rugby Road. And we do have, um, a site plan in for the larger, uh, residential. Um, it came in on the 26th and, uh, comments are due next week. And I know there's a development and review team meeting on Wednesday as well as a site plan conference for the community the following week.
So it came in the 26th of December, after Planning Commission made their decision?
Yes.
But they were in process, though. I mean, you, you, it doesn't, you don't just make a site plan in two days, right?
No, I was just trying to understand the timing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just giving you the facts. So, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our, um, it, any matters by the public?
If I may, Ms. Walker, I wanted to just add additional clarification to the issue regarding the site plan that was submitted. It does cover the two parcels that are owned by our client. It's 513 Rugby, as well as Zero Rugby, has an unusual address. Um, it's a joint site plan application for both projects. It was submitted on December 21st. It was accepted for the December 26th filing deadline, but it was submitted on the 21st. We've been working on it for almost a year. We've already been to the Board of Architectural Review for preliminary review. That was probably six months ago. So we've been working very closely with the BAR. We've even had a meeting with a neighborhood association to talk about the design. We're in consultation with another adjacent landowner, one of the other fraternity houses, on coordinating joint access easements. So it's a really well-thought-through project. We've been, um, we've been involved in it for a very long time, so I just wanted to clarify that. I'd be happy to provide copies of the site plan if anyone were interested or certainly to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? All right.
Nine thirty. Good job.
Meeting adjourned.